Go to YouTube.
At all.
Where'd you pay in from?
Uh, Milan. So we went Milan to Frankfurt to Houston to Salt Lake. And there were a few that were a little close. Cause like when we got in Houston, we had an hour and a half.
Looks like we're ready. Ready? All right. I'd like to call our meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Riverdale City Planning Commission for February 25th, 2025. I'd like to recognize that all of the commissioners are here with the exception of Commissioner Henstrer, who is excused. We also want to welcome Mr. Alan Bowthorpe, who is the latest member to be added to our planning commission, replacing Amy Spires. So, welcome Alan. We had an opportunity to get to know him upstairs in our work session. And so we look forward to working with him in the coming months and improving our city. We'd now open for public comment, item B of our agenda. But seeing no members of our community present, we'll go ahead and move on to item C. For any presentation and reports, community update, Mr. Cooper, if anything?
I did think of one since our last meeting. You might have recognized or noticed a fence around the honey baked ham today. That is the Mission BBQ. Looks like they're getting started. We'll be ready to issue them a permit here soon. So they'll be going through a full remodel of the interior. Fairly extensive remodel of the exterior, and that'll be a new Mission BBQ soon. And we also have issued our building permit for Trader Joe's. So that's always a fun update.
I noticed that Mission BBQ had been putting out adverts for employment, so.
Okay, good.
So they're ramping up for that as well. And good to see that Trader Joe's is moving forward. There's a lot of excitement with that.
How has the noise been from the hillside?
I hear the banging. It's a banging. It's a gun.
Can't hear it in my house. And we're probably, what, four blocks away from it?
There's a lot of posts they've put in. I can't, I couldn't even count them today. There's so many posts. They've put out a lot of posts in.
I believe they'll be done by the seventh. I, I don't know if they'll hit that date, but it seems like they're making great progress.
I don't know how many total they have to put in there, but they've got a lot in there already.
Yeah, they're doing good.
Okay. Our packet, we'll move on to item D, consent items for the meeting minutes for January 28th, 2025 for the work session and regular meeting. Those were not included in our packets in preparation for tonight's meeting. So we will defer that to approve those minutes in an upcoming meeting and have those included, that we can review those and finalize those minutes. As far as our next item on the agenda, action item E, consideration to authorize a reduction to yard space of a mobile home and a boundary line located at 5100 South, 1050 West, Lot 204, as requested by Vance Strunk Construction. Cooper, please.
Thank you. I do have a few slides to cover this. We'll wait for those to come up. As I mentioned in the work session, we have we have three zones that regulate our mobile home communities. It's the RMH1 zone. And in those zones, the placement of mobile home units within the park and the design of the park are all regulated. And so over time, older units are phased out for whatever reason, and they bring in newer units. And typically that's a building code consideration. They're, they're regulated under the building code as well. And so generally we just get building permits. And those building permits show the layout of the, of the unit and the distances between other units, things like that. And then the code also requires certain requirements for anchoring to the ground and some other things. So in this process, if there's a variation of the placement to our regulations, then it comes to me. And, and then we have to, I have to make a decision how to, how to deal with that. Specific to the rear yard, that decision falls on you all in terms of making a reduction.
This has never happened before. I don't know what it's doing.
It's because I'm here.
Sorry.
No problem. Can we do the next slide, please? Okay, so here's the, here's the Riverdale Park. This abuts the golf course there you can see at the bottom. And very faintly, there's a yellow square rectangle there at the bottom of the, of the map. That is the, the, the lot. So it's L204. Each one of the roads are labeled alphabetically. So it's L204. And as I mentioned, it's an older trailer being phased out with a newer one. Go ahead, next slide, please. This is the drawing that was provided to us. As I mentioned, in seeking a building permit, they have to provide a site layout in addition to some other things that the building code requires. This is the site layout. I know it's a little bit faint, but you see the 16 by 66 home there in the middle. It's got a 10 foot distance between the adjacent home on one side, a six foot distance between the awning on one side. And then the, at the bottom of the map there, you see the 14 foot, six inch setback and the 10 foot setback along the roadway. The roadway does curve in that area. Going directly up to the top of the map, you can see the 51 foot property line there. And that property line, that property line is also at an angle, and that's the property line that abuts the golf course. The requirement in the code is 15 feet. They're proposing to allow a nine foot four and an eight foot six reduction. That allowances is in your purview to make, as long as it doesn't reduce down to five feet or less. So the, the minimum is five feet. The requirement is 15. And this is necessary to accommodate the larger units that are generally being built now. They're longer than some of the older ones there. All of the other measurements that are required, they've met with the other setbacks and the distances between the, the adjacent trailers and the front roadway. As I mentioned, I felt like pushing the trailer toward the boundary line and reducing that 15 feet to then eight, six and nine, four is appropriate, is more appropriate than maintaining that 15 feet in the back and pushing the trailer closer to the road. I think that's a hazard and, or could potentially be a hazard in the winter because it would be so close to the asphalt and potentially cause a problem with ice and, and driving, not to mention headlights as people come around the curve. So I think pushing that trailer back towards the property line is the appropriate request for them to make. Next slide, please. And so here's the language that is governing this proposal. Yard space between the end of a mobile home and the boundary line is 15 feet minimum. Where due to the shape of the mobile home space, it is desirable to locate the mobile home closer to the boundary line, which in this case that, that's the situation we're in. The planning commission may authorize a reduction to allow the corner end of the mobile home to be not less than five feet from the park boundary. And so here we are. That's the request for you tonight. If you feel like this is a reasonable request, then this would allow the mobile home to be permanently set and for the, the contractor to continue on with their work and finally get a, a certificate of occupancy. So that's the presentation. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
I just have one question. Are there any other trailers in there that the property could be, we could expand out like that if new trailers came in? Is there enough room for others to do the same?
I haven't looked at every spot. In my research in some of the files that I have, I've come across other requests for reductions in certain, in certain places, not a lot of them. I do see that some of the older trailers don't meet the 15 foot boundary line setback. And so I'm not sure if that was the case when the park was put into place initially. I, I do suspect that as older trailers get phased out and new trailers come in, that we would be faced with this, with this request again.
So if we approve this, can, can we approve it that any others in that area can be also be under the same requirement?
Nope. This approval tonight is specifically for this lot. Yep.
So anybody else that wants to expand will have to come through us to.
That's right. That's right.
I just wondered how many more we've got out there that we might be coming forward.
I suspect it will happen again, but each one will have to meet the requirements in the code. And each one would have to come to the commission to authorize a reduction, if that's the case.
So there's several out there that could do that?
I think so, yeah.
I think whatever we do tonight, whatever course of action that we choose, that we have reasons as to why this would be in the best interest or perhaps not in the best interest. And that we identify those with whatever we propose tonight. As mentioned upstairs, I noticed that the course of play on the golf course is perpendicular to its, to that property line. So it does not appear that it would be at risk from a stray shot or something like that, that, that might hit the home, but.
Depends on who's golfing, probably.
He's on the number one hole, Riverside, the first hole?
The one on the north side of 84. So I believe that's the number one.
Oh, the number two.
Is it two?
Brandon, what would happen if, sorry?
I'm still thinking, but you're probably golf there more than I have, so.
Yeah, it'd be the number two hole.
Okay.
Trees kind of protect that. I play that all the time. So sometimes I'm just grateful for the trees.
What happens if the older ones phase out and a bigger trader wants to move in? What kind of restrictions on ins and outs are going to be at that point?
So every new trailer would have to meet the current conditions of the code. Unless there's a request for a provision like this. And as I look at the code, the RMH1, it doesn't look like there's very many specific allowances for the planning commission to, to grant a reduction. So this was, if you wouldn't mind, Michelle, going back to that. That, so that language, oh, sorry. Yeah. That language right there where it says the planning commission may authorize a reduction. There's no other language like that that I found in the RMH1 code that allows a reduction of any other measurement. And so in that case, if the new trailer didn't fit the bill, then there would have to be some kind of a variance granted by the, the appeal authority.
I think that's kind of what Wanda was getting at is, you know, we're setting the precedence for this one, but how about the other ones as they come and go?
Isn't it true though, that there's, there is a minimum of five feet?
Five feet.
So that still leaves a little bit of wiggle room.
For the bigger ones coming in possibly.
And I think that was good, that was good foresight, whoever wrote this code, knowing that things might change over time. Again, it's the only allowance that has been granted specifically to you as a commission in that code. The other setbacks, that 40 foot from trailer to trailer, nowhere that I found does it say that the planning commission can authorize a reduction in that as it does here. So I don't think it sets a precedent because each individual user would have to come back and ask for the same request. And you're under no obligation to grant it to future users because they would be under different situations.
Their, their spacing would be different, unique to themselves instead of one big agreement for all traders coming in in the future.
Right. You'd have to change the code to allow for that. Yeah.
The property lines would be different in what they're budding up against.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize a reduction to the yard space of a mobile home and a boundary line located at 5100 South, 1050 West, Lot Number 204, as requested by Vance Strunk Construction.
Okay, we have a now my brain's gone to mush.
A motion?
We have a motion that's been presented. Do we have a second?
And I want to say that also with understanding that life changes. And we've got to be able to be able to move and be flexible. I mean, we just can't say you can't do this because life changes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Michelle, would you pull the commissioners, please?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Bow Thorpe?
Yes.
Mr. Nye?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. All right. Thank you. We would next have on our agenda, comments from the planning commission and city staff. Commissioners, anything that you'd like to address in our meeting tonight?
I have one. In our last letter that came out from the mayor, it indicated that RC Willie's now is going to be an apartment complex.
I didn't read it like that. Maybe I misread it.
That's how I read it, is that that property was going to be made into apartment. At one time, we, I understood that the bottom part was going to maybe be business in the uptight, the apartments. But it didn't really say that. It just said that they would be apartments there.
No, I, they're, they're.
I'll go back and read that because that's what I read.
Yeah, we have no indication that it will be apartments and it's not zoned for apartments.
Well, I'm going to back and read it then.
Yeah. If you know something we don't know, please tell us.
So in other words, that piece of property would have to be rezoned.
That's right.
Any movement on Speedway as of a buyer?
Uh huh. We haven't received a formal submission yet, so I'm not able to say it publicly, but yeah, there, there is some interest there.
A new Maverick?
You joke about that, but I don't know if you've seen in numerous places where they have Mavericks on both sides of the road, facing each other. Yeah, they, they don't care.
Logan, there's one in Syracuse.
Sandy, Far West.
Well, I was reading that Maverick has I know that Sugar House, there was a, I'm trying to remember the name. It was a a Quickie Mart type of Maverick that they were trying to put in Sugar House. And it was a name brand that's quite notable throughout the Midwest. And Sugar House and Salt Lake City decided against it and improving it. But then I just noticed that Maverick has bought them.
It was Come and Go.
Come and Go. Yep. That's the one.
Yeah, there's a couple of them that they started building out in West Haven that turned out to be Mavericks because Maverick bought it.
That's one of my favorite.
Started as Come and Goes and before they were finished.
One of my favorite Mavericks now.
Oh, really?
That one out.
Is it diff, is it different? Are they different?
They're layout different. It's like a different building. You've got like a little area of tables and.
A little different floor plan.
Do we have an update on Riverside Flats? Where it's been a month now since we granted an extension and we were concerned with the direction that they would go and how speedily they would get there?
Kind of. I'm glad you brought it up. I was hoping to talk about this in the work session, but we ran out of time. Based on our last conversation, I talked to the city administrator and asked him for some guidance on how we would want to proceed. In order for, just to recap, the site plan for Riverside Flats and Riverdale Apartments, which is both on the north and the south side of 4400. That site plan expired. And so they didn't come into the planning commission and request an extension prior to the expiration. So they have to re, redo their site plan approval. They did that with the planning commission. At that time, of course, I failed to recognize that the parking regulations changed between their original site plan approval and the reapproval that you granted. And so in our course of discussion, had you known that they didn't meet that parking requirement today, then you likely would have not have granted the reapproval. So I talked to Steve Brooks about that. Instead of going to the, to the council and asking for them to reapprove it in light of, of your decision and, and what had happened, I, I've been looking at actually the, the code and proposing to the commission a revamp of our parking code. I'm doing all of the work that is entailed in trying to make a coherent and, and reasonable proposal to take our parking code from basically for multifamily units, it's 2.25 stalls per unit, just a blanket. And through my study, it's one of the highest parking requirements in the state. And so for Riverside Flats to meet that parking requirement, they would have to lose 30 units. Roughly, I can't remember the exact number. So it, it kills that project. And it also makes other future projects that would have potential much more difficult. They need more land to have the same number of units than they would with a smaller parking requirement. That's kind of obvious, right? So there's a very fine balance between being overparked and underparked. If you're overparked, then projects become infeasible and you're not using your land wisely. If you're underparked, it causes problems with offsite parking and traffic control and stuff like that. Additionally, the developers who build these things don't want to be underparked or overparked either, because if they're underparked, then it's hard to rent units because people don't have places for their second car or their mom that comes and visits has to park down the street and walk. They also don't want to be overparked because then their financial models don't work. Right now, my personal opinion is that based on my research and based on this project specifically, 2.25 stalls per unit is overparked, meaning our regulation is too onerous and doesn't effectively use our land. Does it give us plenty of parking spaces? Absolutely. It'd be one of the best parked locations around. But in this case, and I think in future cases, it would, it causes problems. So what is that, that parking ratio? What should it be? It used to be 1.75 and we all felt that that was too, too little, right? So it's not 1.75 and it's, and I don't think it should be 2.25. Where should it be in, in that spectrum? And so that's what I'm studying right now. I'm looking at a lot of projects that have built, been built across the Wasatch Front and what they're parked at and what's working, what's not working. I'm looking at other codes in other cities to see what their regulations call for. There's also a multifamily appraisal company that is the market leader in this space. The gentleman's name is Jeff Nice, and he has a, a firm that basically does appraisal work and pro forma work for prospective projects. He's the guru, they call him. Anyway, he can help us to understand what that sweet spot might be as it pertains to development in the Wasatch Front over the last five to seven years. So I'm working with him to try to figure that out as well. So long answer longer is that I will be coming back to you based on recommendation from Steve to propose a change in our parking regulation based on this project as an impetus, but I think as good policy moving forward. So as new projects come on, we don't run into the same problem.
So where we gave them an extension, is that a known L or what, where are we at?
It's just moot because had I taken it to the planet, to the city council, then it would have had some bearing. But after our last conversation, you had told me that had you known that they don't, don't meet our current parking regs, that you wouldn't have approved it. I've chosen just to drop it and not move it forward to the city council as is.
So Brandon, what's, help me wrap my head around, what is two cars per stall? Is that not feasible or reasonable? It seems to me like every house has at least two vehicles. Is that a, a tough one to swallow? Why two is a bad number?
Two is a common number, but then you look at things like one bedrooms and studios, which is in an apartment building, the bulk of the units. Three bedrooms are usually the least amount of units. And ones in studios are usually the most. So there's formulas out there that give, that give a, a different allocation of units to the one bedrooms and studios than just two. So the overall aggregate is a reduction. It, it doesn't equal, you know, two per unit. It's a little bit less like 1.83 or something like that. And so that's kind of what, just a preview, that's what I'll be proposing is we look at a formula that instead of gives a blanket number despite the number of, the types of units, that we look at a per unit count per type of, of unit. So for every studio and one bedroom, maybe it's one car per unit. And then two, two bedroom and three bedrooms, you get two cars per unit with a 10% allocation for guests. Maybe something like that would be more pertinent than just say two and a quarter across the whole thing. And I'll have some data to, to go with that.
I, I know we were talking, we were down at the land use seminar. I can't think of the name of it that we went to in the fall.
Utah City of Towns and.
Yeah, that's the one. We were talking about that parking is very expensive land use. And, and I, I was under the impression too that the direction that Utah is moving is towards lower numbers of parking stalls versus higher numbers of parking stalls per unit in these types of situations. Is that correct?
I think so. As land becomes more scarce, then people are constantly looking at ways to be more efficient. Structured parking is the most efficient way to, to deal with parking, but it's also the most expensive. Shared use parking is really efficient. So when you have our, our shopping centers where we have big buildings and lots of parking stalls, they're usually cross access easements and connections that allow for that parking to be done more efficiently. Parking is not free, despite the fact that we're not actively paying for it at the parking stall. It still is not free. It has a, a significant cost to the community. And so it's really just the study of how to make that the most effective. And to me, there's no blanket answer. Our parking regs now that just says two and a quarter for everything, I, I just don't think that's doing us or our development partners any, any service. We ought to think a bit more deeply about that. And so there could be, there could be concessions made for areas that there is significant off-street parking, or excuse me, on-street parking. In this case, 4400 doesn't allow for on-street parking. And so that, that's a consideration. But let's say there's another development where there's significant on-street parking that, that could handle overflow from the site itself. That could be something where you can have a lower parking requirement.
That becomes an issue during snow season.
Yeah. And so those are all the things that we have to, to look at. We're facing challenges with the way that Riverdale is built out in terms of our parking in general. The way that our retailers developed in the past is no longer the way that things are done now, and it's not sustainable. And so we're faced with large parking lots along Riverdale Road and that.
That are largely empty.
That are largely empty.
At the time.
Right.
They were built to peak time demands, which is one or two times a year. And those demands have even waned over the years because of online shopping. And so now we're left with these giant blacktop surfaces that not only eat up our land mass, but create heat island effect and all kinds of environmental things that contribute to unpleasant quality of life. So I think that's one of our primary goals. And one of our most significant roles is to really figure out what is the most appropriate parking regulations we can have. And I just don't think the blanket two and a quarter is serving us very well.
So the current plans, what is the number of parking spaces that, that they have? Do you know off the top of your head?
So at the time it was approved, we had a parking requirement of 1.75 stalls per unit. And they parked both the north side and the south side about 1.83. So they. So they overparked even according to our code at the time. But they're underparked according to where we're at today. That's a long answer, sorry.
No, that was a very detailed answer. I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it up. It will be an important consideration in the next couple of weeks when I have time to finish up my, my study and.
And this is a side topic for, to be discussed another day, but is there any way to incentivize the businesses that own large parking lots to develop some of that space in a different way in the future?
It's a really good question. One of the problems that we have is that the nature of that development puts the building offset from the road, right? And then a giant parking lot. And in some cases, there are what's called pad sites. So you see this. So Applebee's would be a pad site to the development in the rear. And In-N-Out Burger is a pad site to ShopCo or, or what was ShopCo. A lot of these people who own the big buildings in the back restrict what pads can go in the front. So they don't want competitors. So if I'm a landlord and I own the, the whole Ashley parking area, I'm gonna restrict what goes in the front to not compete with Ashley Furniture. So those, those kind of restrictions really affect what gets developed in private property. And so these people that have these large lots tend to keep them that way to preserve their own, their, their primary tenant.
I know that we, we had a cross-agreement between Lowe's and Cheddar's when Cheddar's came in. I remember discussing that, that Cheddar's normally wouldn't have had enough, and so they entered into a cross-agreement with Lowe's.
Yeah.
It was allowed and the exception was made.
And that's a good point. That side of the road actually has developed differently, largely because, you know, from JCPenney up, that's all one single developer, Boyer, or it was at the time. That's a little bit easier because they did create parking in the middle, and they put buildings in the back and buildings in the front. And that's really how it should be, where the parking is hidden in the middle and it's shared by everybody. Where we have some of these older developers, developments that have bought and sold, bought and sold, and developed over time. There still is restrictions that prohibit things happening on the front side of the street. Target's a good, a good example. They have a massive parking lot.
Nobody uses.
Yeah. And, you know, to get them to open up some pad sites in the front and allow for some development up there. For Target, it would be difficult because anyone who's likely to go in there would compete with what they sell inside the store, except the restaurant, really.
Yeah.
You have a lot of semi trucks shuffling around that south side constantly. I guess that's about the only place they can really maneuver them big, big rigs is on the south side of Target.
And they sleep overnight, and they can't do that, and it's a huge problem.
I haven't looked at it recently, but I remembered we did the sign there on that south.
Good foundation.
I don't think that, I mean, it's not good foundation, but for Target.
Oh.
It's not even up.
I don't even think that they've got that up. I mean.
It's up, but it's blank.
Yeah, they haven't completed that.
Was that four pad sites on the Target lot?
No, it was just that sign.
Yeah, but why?
The freeway.
Why do they have multiple places in the sign? There's like three different segments of the sign.
No, there's one right where I-84 is, right below I-84 on the south side of that parking lot. There's a.
Just before you hit.
There's right there, just one post with a sign that don't have any, any.
But there's three slots.
Oh, I don't know about the three slots. They're all blank. So I don't know, you know.
Yeah, it's not one, it's not one entity's sign. It's three different, maybe four. And so I always wondered, were they planning on putting pads, sites out in the front parking lot and just never did it?
Is that a conversation that we could start sparking with some of these businesses?
Yes, but after we sit down and have a 2030 discussion as a commission, I have a big map on her desk. I left it in her office. But now it's back in my office. Where we started just drawing what the future of the city looks like. And so I think we ought to, I think the council's gonna have a strategic meeting on the fourth and maybe after that. We should probably, if I may recommend, thinking about an off-Tuesday strategy meeting where it's more of a workshop than a formal commission meeting. And we have the ability to sit around a map and just envision what 20 years looks like for Riverdale. And in that discussion, we'll determine what Riverdale Road's gonna turn into and, or what it should turn into. And then we can make policy that supports that.
There was the Weber County Envision that was at Roy City.
Yeah.
That we did.
Yeah.
And that was, I enjoyed that. That was open to anybody I remember, if I remember right, any of the planning commissioners, but I went to it. And that's where we came up with some of the ideas as far as approaching the state for another access, for freeway access off of 84 into Riverdale. And that's where Stringtown really kind of took off and, and got some impetus going on that, so.
Yeah, that was the Wasatch Choice 2050 Plan, and they're just finishing it now, and it'll be published. And all of our inputs will be in that plan. That's a good starting point. It's not granular, like I think we ought to be as a commission. It's more 30,000-foot level. But certainly the things that we put in that plan will then come into a more granular plan. It, the city council's obviously gonna be doing their own thing in terms of strategy and what, but they're more, more focused or, and should be more focused on budgetary items, right? Making sure that the city can be sustainable over time. As a commission, we have the opportunity to look at quality life items and to determine how the city should build out over the next few decades. I think that's exciting. So I'll just put that out to you, and we can make that happen whenever you guys want to.
Sounds great.
I'm, I'm for it, so if we could plan for that maybe sometime in. We get in settings like this and we say, yeah, let's do it. But if we don't set a timeframe, it just gets kicked down the road. So I would propose the end of March that we look at having an additional date that we can come together and, and do some brainstorming.
It'll be a public meeting, like this is a public meeting, but we don't necessarily invite the public to join us in the discussion. They can come and watch, of course, but those types of workshops and open houses and public engagement periods will happen maybe down the road, specific to other changes that we might make. But I think it's healthy for us just to have a visioning session amongst ourselves and get some ideas on paper.
Yeah, and I think it'd be helpful too if we reviewed, is there a way for us to view what the city council meeting is like when they have theirs?
Yeah, they'll be less into the planning elements and more into the operational elements.
It will help just have an overall view. Will it be available to watch or?
Theirs will be a public meeting, right, on the fourth?
It'll be streamed?
Yeah, uh, no, no. It'll be public, but it won't be streamed, probably.
If you can make it, please join us.
That's on the fourth?
It'll be after the regular council meeting.
Okay.
And that's kind of a crapshoot as far as timing.
So far, there's not a lot.
And then one day, it might be prudent to have a joint session between the planning commission and the council, just to get everybody on the same page.
I have a question that just came up to me. The flag? Okay, sorry.
Well, no, I'm Friday.
There's some big grins on that one.
It's your favorite subject.
I submitted a Ramp grant request for it, and then there's another one. It's supposed to be open in the spring, but it hasn't opened yet. But I kind of made it something else. So I made it an outdoor classroom, so it'll be like a whole big area with some seating in it, and then the flag in the middle and all that stuff. So they're, they've been, they're meeting right now in Ramp to look over all the projects and stuff. I got good feedback from our liaison. But they'll decide on Friday, so. Thank you.
To update me on the flag, where am I?
Some of us made the, the recommendation here that Riverdale City celebrates Old Glory Days. And trying to improve Old Glory Days. Randy with the Car Show, and what he was able to envision and, and bring about has helped to make it a greater celebration. But it's Old Glory Days, and we've got an Old Glory flag. Why don't we have an Old Glory flag?
It won't be that big, like the ones they carry across the football field, but it'd be, I put in for a 60-foot.
But bigger than.
Pole, and it's like a 15 by 30.
And where would you fly this at?
I think 15 by 30 is what it was.
Bag pole? In the park, you know.
North end of the park.
Whether we replace the one that's there. But the one that's there with the flag, that's probably a, a four by five foot flag.
Do you guys want to?
It'd just be nice to have something that really represents the community. As, as Brandon, as Mr. Cooper mentioned, that becomes then an icon, because if we have it right there at the freeway, people driving by saying, oh yeah, here's Riverdale. It becomes a, an icon for the city.
Brandon, are you getting a lot of good feedback from the citizens, the, the survey that Riverdale City put out? Comments?
We have a whole presentation on the survey. Maybe that's something we should notice and put on the agenda. I think you'd enjoy having Michelle do a presentation.
I think that'd be good, what the citizens are looking for, you know, get their feedback.
If you watched the last council meeting, we did go over it there, but it's kind of hard to.
You touched it real quickly. I noticed that. I did watch that. But I was just thinking, if we could bring the, the highlights, maybe just, you know, certain key points that the citizens are overwhelmingly looking at, that they really like, kind of condense it into those items. I think it'd be good for us to understand what the city's opinions are.
Relative to planning items, is what you're saying?
Relativity to planning, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, anytime.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Do that next time.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Nye, I pulled up the newsletter. Your question earlier. A question was raised, and this is directly from the newsletter, is the old RC Willie area going to become apartments? No, there is no plan, there is no plan to change the use of that area from commercial to residential. We're hoping with the announcement of Trader Joe's that renewed interest will be spurred and that we can get a great new tenant in that large building. We're definitely working on it, so. That'll clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. Between Walmart and Hobby Lobby, there is a fence. Why did they, why don't they tear that fence down? I mean, if you're in, if you're in Walmart and you want to go to Jersey Mike's, you gotta go clear over and interrupt Maverick, which is in a mess, all the way around. Who put that fence up? Is it Walmart put the fence up and won't take it down?
The way I understand it is the fence is a remnant of the development of that car lot, that car dealership. So that was their back fence at the time. And when Maverick and Hobby Lobby and all that developed, the fence remained because there was an issue with Walmart not taking care of their shopping carts appropriately. And so I've asked the owners of the fence to, to remove it, and they said that they will only if they can get a commitment from Walmart to deal with their shopping carts, and they haven't received that commitment, so.
That is really a hindri.
A hassle, yeah.
Yeah, that is a narrow roadway between, or behind Maverick, trying to get back in through there.
Yeah.
If that empty lot that it's on can be developed.
Yeah, there's, there's a property between Walmart and Hobby Lobby, right? There, there's a piece of property there that you could have another business.
And I understand they're actively pursuing that, so if, if that can be developed, then the fence will go away as part of that.
Okay.
Who owns that property?
Ketrubis.
That answers.
Yeah, that answered it.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
So you just got back to Mira?
I did.
Awesome.
I did. I took my boys.
Oh, I shouldn't have said that. I'm sorry.
Just you and the boys?
I am so sorry.
No, no.
My teenagers.
You were gonna share some thoughts.
Yeah, have you been to Europe?